Good evening. Welcome to our Rancho Cordova City Council meeting. I ask our city clerk to call the roll, please.
Councilmember Terry.
Here.
Councilmember Budge.
Here.
Councilmember Gatewood will be walking in in just a moment.
Here.
Vice Mayor Sander.
Here.
Mayor McGarvey.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. I ask our city clerk to announce the meeting, video recording, and playback schedules, please.
The meeting of the Rancho Cordova City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T Uverse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will air on Thursday, October 10th at 9:00 a.m. and Wednesday, October 16th at 6:00 p.m. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any library branch. A copy can also be ordered from the city clerk's department. And a webcast of this meeting will also be available on the city's website within 48 hours of adjournment of this meeting.
Thank you. I'm going to ask Darrell Langwell to lead us in the pledge, and then I may invite the audience to remain standing for the invocation. That will be called by Julie Steinbach from the United Methodist Church of Rancho Cordova.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. God Almighty Creator, we are gathered here this evening to continue to make Rancho Cordova a great place to live, work, and play. You have blessed us with abundant wisdom to tackle our city issues, encourage us to support each other, and treat everyone with respect. Help us to reach competent decisions that will positively affect our community. In your name we pray. Amen.
No, thank you. Well, we have a little bit of a change, had a change on our agenda. I'm going to do, and I'm going to proceed with item 12.1 on the agenda. That's presentations. Following presentations, we will move into public comment, council reports, and the city manager's report. Then we'll proceed to the order of the agenda. And I ask Stacy Delaney for the presentation of the Community Enhancement Fund Grants. And I have council members to join Stacy.
So, thank you, Mayor, and council members. I am Stacy Delaney, the Community Enhancement Analyst. And we are here tonight to present ceremonial checks to several organizations that receive grant funding this fiscal year through the city's Community Enhancement Fund. And the first check tonight is for Mandarin's of Sacramento Inc. and their after-school music academy. After recognizing a gap in music education programs in the Sacramento region, Mandarin's developed an after-school beginning band program for elementary schools that did not offer music education in their core curriculum. The program is designed to introduce elementary students to the world of instrumental music. Their program culminates with concerts held each fall and spring, and the program is currently operating at Sunrise and Robert J. McGarvey Elementary Schools through this grant. So President and CEO Jim Tabucci and Board of Directors Chairperson Joe Fong are accepting the check for $8,400.
Awesome. Thank you. (applause).
And you bought your building?
We have bought our building. We're going through the process.
When am I playing bingo there?
Yeah, end of November.
What's he at? Tell us so that Stacy can tell us your location.
Oh, yes. We're at 9792 Business Park.
You can come right here.
Oh, thank you. Yes. So, it's really great. Not only are we privileged to be able to receive this check so we can provide scholarships to students within Rancho Cordova, but we are going to be full-time residents of Rancho Cordova with our building at 9792 Business Park Drive. And so we're looking forward to becoming just integral members of the community here. So, thank you very much.[304.14][304.14](applause).
The second check this evening is for Beyond the Village Workforce Development Program. Their program model helps clients who are typically veterans and adults 55 and older evaluate their current employment situation and also assess their current skill sets as well as their career aspirations and goals. Ten adult residents will receive job entry and re-entry education services over a 12-week period. This includes skill set evaluations, job search techniques, resume building, state qualification creations, interview preparations, and more. They also get one-on-one consultations with a trainer to assess their potential employment opportunities. Angela Lofton-Moore is the one accepting the check today for $10,000.[358.28][358.28](applause). Thank you, Angela.
You're welcome.
You're welcome. The third check this evening is for Sacramento City Unified School District's after-school program at George Washington Carver School of Arts and Science. With this funding, Carver High School can develop an after-school program that provides a robotics course and further development of the school music program by adding instruments. The music program will perform at least four times within the school year, and the robotics team will participate in competitions. School Principal Dr. Allegra Alessandria is here to accept the check for $13,000.[400.24][400.24](applause). Oh, you're welcome. Thank you. The next check up is for the Art of Yoga Program and their yoga instruction at Mitchell Middle School. The Art of Yoga Project sends specially trained yoga teachers and creative arts educators into schools like Mitchell Middle School to teach mindfulness-based practices. Using the tools taught, the students begin to identify the issues that cause them to make poor choices, and they manage their impulses and develop a productive outlet for their emotions. Site Director Christina Martin is accepting the check for $16,250.[447.81][447.81](applause). And I think one year in the past, Linda went out to the, and participated in their yoga, so. So I think we need to invite Bob or somebody else.
Yes, I did, yes.
The last check this evening will be presented to the Sacramento Area Bicycle Advocates for continuing to build a community bicycling program here in Rancho Cordova. Sacramento Area Bicycle Advocates, better known as SABA, is teaming up with Bicycle Advocates of Rancho Cordova, better known as BARC, to encourage bicycling to and from events as well as providing repair and safety clinics. Other components of the program include urban cycling classes as well as bike valet programs at 18 different community events. Executive Director Deborah Banks of SABA, as well as Steve Paz, Executive Director of BARC, are here to accept the check for $18,000.[515.04][515.04](applause). Thank you. Nice to see you. Thank you. And this does conclude tonight's check presentations.
Thank you for everything you're doing for all the kids. That was wonderful. I'm glad you were able to help. Next, we're going to call on Ryan Larkin for the recognition of MD Staffers, and have Garrett go up there with him and give him the proclamation.
All right, give her a run. First off, I'm going to ad lib because that's what I do. Ryan and I have known since he started MD Staffers and came over to Rancho Cordova. We were actually in the same building, and he's an IT nerd like me, so we had many nights where he was up trying to fix things, and I was up watching him try to fix things. So, it was a good relationship. So, proclamation for the city of Rancho Cordova to MD Staffers. Rancho Cordova is a based physician recruiting firm. MD Staffers was named as the 49th fastest-growing company in the United States by Inc. Magazine. That's fastest-growing company in Rancho Cordova as well, MD Staffers, all started by him, which is the most prestigious ranking of the nation's fastest-growing private companies. And MD Staffers specializes in temporary and permanent placement of physicians, advanced practitioners, healthcare executives, and in hospitals. MD Staffers also provides tailored solutions to each of its clients, whereas small and large practices nationwide. I just heard that MD Staffers now has expanded all the way to DC, so we're already very impressed with this Rancho Cordova-born firm. And then, MD Staffers attributes growth to their staff and their good business and believing that good staff, good business comes inherently. Therefore, as City Council of Rancho Cordova hereby does congratulate MD Staffers and encourages all to celebrate this milestone. This is all for my friend Bob, but I have set, he has set his hand to the seal of Rancho Cordova and affixed it on October 7th, 2019. I just want to congratulate MD Staffers, one of our best and brightest.
Quickly, I just want to address the council. We're just so thrilled to be a member of this community. Reasonable commercial rent, cost of living, and have been, you know, integral in our growth. We're just so happy that, you know, we kind of looked at a map and said, hey, Rancho Cordova, it's commutable, it's reasonable, it's safe. This is where we want to be, and it's just been fantastic to be a member of this community. Many of our employees are able to live here locally in the community and not have to commute. It's been fantastic, and we're looking forward to a lasting partnership with the city and within the city. So, we look forward to expanding and maybe putting up a building here. So, thank you.[727.37][727.37](applause).
Congratulations. Yep, photo, that's right. Forty-ninth fastest-growing company in the United States. Wow, that's, going on to 12.3, I'm calling Rebecca Sloan to the Cordova Accelerated Performing Arts Presentation.
Good evening. How are you all? We're going to give you a brief presentation, and I have a very big part. First, I'd just like to say thank you very much for your support for our program and the staff that we had the opportunity to work with, and this is the rest of my whole job tonight. I'd like to introduce you to some young talent from our program who are going to make a presentation of our outcomes and our process and a little short video of our show for those of you who weren't able to see it. So first, I'm going to bring up Alina Blanco. She played Puck. Samantha Sloan, who played Hermia. Wyatt Herkins, who played Lysander. And my co-founder, actress, and choreographer Shannon Mahoney. And we promise to do this in 10 minutes. Thanks.
Hi, my name is Alina Blanco, and first, we're going to thank our sponsors. So, our sponsors are the City of Rancho Cordova, Rancho Cordova City Council, Folsom Cordova Unified School District, Cordova Recreation and Park District, Big Idea Theater. Thank you. Rick Sloan Design, Tony Nguyen Photography, Golden State Water, Chipotle, and KP Market. So here are some of our program elements. We have the Summer Community Theater Program. The show took place June 10th to July 22nd. We had six weeks of rehearsal, so it was about three to four nights a week. Movement and Choreography, Acting Coaching, Shakespeare Instruction, Technical Theater Experience, and three performances. Lastly, our program outreach was to Cordova Community Council, Cordova High School, Cordova Recreation and Park District, George Washington Carver High School, Hawkins Dance School, Albionni Middle School, Pleasant Grove High School, Folsom High School, Folsom Lake College, Rancho Cordova Center, Kenny High School, Rancho Cordova Library, and Sac State.
All right, and I'm going to talk about the program demographics a little bit. We had about 20 program participants ranging between 15 to 23 years of age and 50% culturally diverse. This is just a couple, well, a couple, most of our headshots that Tony Nguyen took that we are able to use in future auditions if we would like. And then this is just a fun picture we took on one of our very first meetings together in one of our rehearsals. Some of us knew each other, some of us didn't, but at the end of the show, we all grew to be really close and great friends. Some of the program outcomes. Promotion of youth and young adults in the city of Rancho Cordova. Twenty young actors and crew members. 120 hours of engagement per participant. Auditions and resume workshops, technical theater, professional headshots, expert team, multi-agency partnering, in-kind contributions of over 15,000 in professional expertise. Free community performance for over 300 people.
So, right here is Ms. Mahoney, and she helped our cast with the meaning of our scenes and the movements of our stage. Where? Where? Oh, sorry about that. So, I hear, part of our promotion included our photo on the cover of the newspaper. And then rehearsals helped with the line memorization, especially with the difficult Shakespearean language. And then, again, Ms. Mahoney helped our cast with the meaning of scenes and our movements on our stage. And then here, Ms. Mahoney and Ms. Robinson helped workshop with us for our future auditions. And then here, Mr. Compton, he provided our technical support. And together, we built our set. And then, here are some of the girls doing the tech. Here are some of the guys doing the tech and building the sets. And then here is Mr. Sloan helping us painting wooden tree poles. And then here.
Very artistic.
Yes, indeed. Mr., no, where am I? I'm lost. Ms. Mahoney provided choreography for our final dance number at the end of the show. And then our program was led by Ms. Sloan, including with Mr. Sloan's help, promotions with public agency partners, community organizations, local events, like the Fourth of July Parade, and of course, social media helped turn out audience, which included the 916 Link, Boys and Girls Club, Campus Life Connection, City of Rancho Cordova, the Cordova Community Council, Cordova Recreation and Park District. I can't quite read that. Is that Escatton?
Escatan.
Escatan. Explorer Program, Folsom Cordova Unified School District, Folsom Lake College, Electronic Signs, Folsom Cordova Community Partnership, Fourth of July Parade, Hummingbird Theater, Hideout Program. Does that say MAC? MAC Artist Reception, the Mock Program, Police Athletic League, Pro Youth and Families, Rancho Cordova Chamber of Commerce, social media such as Facebook, Instagram, or the Next Door, The Grapevine Independent, and then Village Green Kiosk. Thank you.
So, this is a show, it's a classic theater experience, which looks great on everyone's resume. And I work on many stages throughout the greater Sacramento area. I work with all three professional houses, Los Rios, Sac City, Los Rios, Folsom, and other community theaters throughout Sacramento. And I've really had a fabulous time working with these folks. This is our play within a play. This is Oberon and Titania and the fairies. And for those of you who were unable to join us this summer, we have a short video. It's about three minutes long for our final product. Enjoy.
Are you not Hermia? Are you not Lysander? I am as fair now as I was ere while. Since night you loved me, since night you left me. Why then you left me? Oh, the gods forbid, in earnest I say!
I, by my life, never did desire to see thee more. Therefore, be out of question of doubt that I do hate thee, love Helena.
Oh, me, you juggler, you caker blossom! Why did you come by night and stolen my love heart from him? By thy faith, have you no modesty? No maiden shame? Not to the basket? What, you tarrant-patting actress from my gentle tongue? Fight, fat, you counterfeit, you puppet, you... Why so? Ah, that way goes the game! Now I perceive that she hath made compares between our stature, she hath earned her height, and with her personage, her tall personage, her high pursuit, and she hath prevailed with him. And are you grown so high in esteem because I am so dwarfish and so low? How low am I, thou painted maple? Speak! How low am I? Am I not yet so low that I can reach thy nails and to thy eyes?
I pray you, though you mock me, gentlemen, let her not hurt me. I was never cursed, I have no gifted untruiness. Let her not strike me. You patent it because you took me lower than myself that I could match her. Let her haunt again!
Dear Hermia, do not be so bitter with me. I have rewarded loving Hermia, dinner, material counsel, never wrong you. Save that, and love unto Demetrius, I told yourself unto this one. He followed you for love, I followed him. But he hath tried me heads, threatened me too, to strike me, spur me, made her kill me too. And now, till you let me quiet go, back to asking where are women falling back and following her further? Let me go! You see also how fond I am!
Why get you gone? Who is it that hinders you?
Foolish heart that I leave her behind!
What? With Lysander?
Ha! With Demetrius.
Ha! Worry not, Helena, shall not harm thee here.
No, sir, she shall not, though you take her part.
When she's anger, she's keen and true. She's a vixen when she went to school.
And though she be those little, she is fierce.
Little! Nothing but low and little! Why will you suffer her to flout me this? Let me come to her!
Get gone, you dwarf! You hindering piece of not grass made! You beast, you acorn! You're two officious in her behalf that squands your services. Let her alone. Speak not of Helena. Take not her part, for if thou dost intend never so little show of love to her, thou shalt abide. Now she holds me not. Now follow, thou darest, to try whose right of mine are thine, and most in Helena.
Follow. Nay, I'll go with thee cheek by jowl.
So, thank you again for the opportunity. We truly could not have put the program on for the community without your support, and we have a small gift of our appreciation this evening. We brought you a photo to put up in City Hall from the show. So, here's the first year's cast, and we brought you some keepsakes from The Grapevine Independent.
Do you want to pose for a photo?
Of course we do.
Okay. Maybe I'll take that back then.
Do you guys want that whole bit?
Sure.
Thanks, ma'am. Go stand with them.
We will be too. Go that way.
This way.
Okay, now I'm going to call on George Washington Carver School of Arts and Science. Principal Allegra Alessandria and Nisha Turiturki, Principal AMWEN Public Waldorf, that in recognition of the 100th anniversary of Waldorf education globally. And I have two proclamations. They're the same, except it says AMWEN Public Waldorf, and the other is George Washington Carver School of Arts and Science. Proclamation, whereas on September 19th, 2019, 100 years of Waldorf education was celebrated worldwide. Whereas first Waldorf school opened September 19th, 1919, and stuck at Gart, Germany, the first Waldorf school in North America opened in 1928 in New York City. Today, there are more than 250 Waldorf schools in North America, more than 50 in the United States, and two right here in Rancho Cordova. Whereas the principles of Waldorf education were created by Waldorf Steiner, who believed that the human being is a combination of spirit, soul, and body. And Steiner incorporated this belief in developing the Waldorf methods, purchased a individualized learning with emphasis on education and supporting the entire student. Whereas academic classes emphasize the development of independent investigation, critical thinking, and applied academic and creative skills, students who later use to contribute to their community. Whereas George Washington Carver School of Arts and Science is one of three public Waldorf schools in the United States and the first public Waldorf method high school to open in this country. Whereas George Washington Carver School of Arts and Science opened 2008, and AMWEN Elementary Waldorf, AKA K-18, adopted a Waldorf curriculum in 2012. Therefore, the two public Waldorf method schools of Rancho Cordova public provide a K-12 educational pathway. I can't talk today. Now therefore, be it resolved, the City Council of the City of Rancho Cordova recognizes both schools of taking part of this important milestone, and for the K-12 Waldorf method educational pathway, provide a student in Rancho Cordova. And witness thereof, I have set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Rancho Cordova to be affixed this 7th day of October 2019. Thank you for your wonderful things you're doing for our students.
This is a very thoughtful proclamation. I think it is significant that Rancho is probably the only city in the country that is home to a K-12 public Waldorf pathway. So, congratulations on your innovation.
I'm just so honored that being the second public Waldorf school in the nation, that we've been welcomed so warmly into the city of Rancho Cordova. I'm truly honored to be here, and this is beautiful. So, thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody coming down? Okay. You know, sometimes you got it, and sometimes you don't. So, that's the way it is. And next call on communication, the Public Affairs Director Maria Nistad to introduce a new welcome, new employee. Boy.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council Members. Maria Nistad, Communications and Public Affairs Director for the city. Very happy to be there this evening to introduce to you and to welcome a new member of our communications team. Danielle Hale is going to be a communications officer on our team, and she's going to tell you a little bit about herself and her experience.
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council Members. Thank you all for giving me the opportunity to introduce myself this evening. As Maria said, my name is Danielle Hale. I am the newest communications officer for the City of Rancho Cordova. Part of my role on the team will be to share all of the great work that the City of Rancho Cordova is doing with the local residents and businesses here in the community. Part of that includes sharing content on social media, in the monthly newsletters, and contributing content to the city website. Prior to this, my experience has been as a marketing and communication manager for the local Better Business Bureau, just off of Mather Field Road. In that position, we attended several events throughout the community that were either hosted by or with the City of Rancho Cordova. And it became very apparent to me very quickly that the City of Rancho Cordova was a very committed community, committed to their residents and to the local business owners. And I was very drawn to the City of Rancho Cordova right away, and that's part of what attracted me to this position. I look forward to working with you all, and I hope to see you around City Hall soon. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. I am number nine in public comment. Citizens wishing to address the council for any matter not on the agenda may do so at this time by completing and submitting a speaker card to the city clerk. For items on the agenda, speakers will be called up to the podium by the mayor at the point on the agenda when the item will be heard. Speakers are encouraged to keep comments to three minutes or less and to state name and community of residence. Under the provisions of the California Government Code, the city council is prohibited from discussing or taking immediate action on any item not on the agenda unless it can be demonstrated to be an emergency nature or the need to take immediate action rose after the posting of the agenda. Do we have any cards for the public comment?
I do not have any public speaker cards.
Anyone in the audience wishes to speak, didn't turn in a card. All right. We'll go on with our council reports. Donald Terry.
There's something going on this weekend. I'm trying to remember. Oh yeah, the airshow. Still, I think the best weekend that we get to have as a city in marketing our community and paying respect to our past and everything else. It was a fantastic few days. Really, it was a fantastic week. One interesting thing that somebody asked me about that I'm assuming is a byproduct of our airshow is extra fender benders in Rancho Cordova of people just watching up in the sky and not realizing cars had stopped in front of them. That'd be a fascinating stat to get at some point.
Maybe not.
But the number of people I saw this week, you know, with their eyes to the sky, maybe not necessarily in their car, but, you know, stopping and... And I will say, I played in a charity golf tournament on Friday at Bartley Kavanaugh, and I drove back down Consumnas Boulevard all the way to Grantline. And I'll just say, I never realized how far away they go to turn around and come back here, but I was on Consumnas River Boulevard on, close to I-5, and I could read U.S. Navy on their wings. That's how far away they're... They're going to Elk Grove to turn around. So as much as this is in Rancho Cordova, where the airshow is, the show for the rest of this community is, you know, 10 miles away from here. So what a fantastic event, and kudos to everybody that was involved. I know there was a lot of city staff that were driving shuttles and all kinds of other stuff there. We had Zoe out there with the police department, and so just a great job by everybody. I, along with Garrett and Bob and Bob's wife, attended the ALF dinner this year. Cyrus, I know you were out of town, but it was great to have a showing there from the city, really hoping that we can find a couple more people in the next few years to go through that process. Air quality, I'll just give a brief update because I did bring this up at a previous meeting, that there has still been some discussion around a per capita fee. The political will, basically, it was brought up at our last meeting. We had record attendance for the first time. It was interesting to see some faces that I haven't seen in that room in over two years, come just to express their concern about the fee. But the reality is, is at some point, either the air district is going to have to stop doing things that they're doing, or they're going to have to find additional funding somewhere, whether it's the state or the feds or somebody. But at this point, the board is still looking at other options and how they're going to do it, but I'm not sure that there's the political will at the county or with a lot of the incorporated cities. Another fun event that I got to go to and somehow wrangled Garrett to come over and join me was C-Chat, so the school for the hearing impaired children that's behind Goodwill off of Coloma, did a fundraiser in the parking lot area directly behind what is Sportsman's Warehouse and the Dollar Store and that kind of stuff. They actually set up a track, and a bunch of us raced those big tricycles that they use at the King's Games.
Photos, please.
We have a lot of photos. There's video too. But here's the challenge I want to make, because... Well, I also spotted somebody five seconds because she was wearing heels, because women are supposed to be wearing heels and guys are supposed to be wearing ties. So it, can't remember the exact tie of it, but they do this every year, and they've been doing it for like seven or eight years. I never knew who was there. So Garrett came over and did kind of a race. I won't say he cheated, but he cheated. But it was a couple of guys, it was a couple of guys from Les Schwab that got to the finals, and this guy from Les Schwab that won again this year, and they sponsored it. But I want to challenge all of us next year. It's a lot of fun. There were a lot of ladies there doing it, too. Hopefully, everyone on this dais wants to show up and ride a tricycle for some really great kids. What was really cute about it, the track that they put in was a little bigger than this room, probably, but all of the kids or the students from that program, they all brought their tricycles and their little bikes and stuff, and they got to race after us, too. So you get to meet all the kids. They brought some fire trucks. The police department came. I heard Chief came over right after we left, because I texted a few of you, Garrett, Cyrus, and Chief, to see if you guys could make it over. Again, I didn't even know what this was. My regional manager for Tri-County's Bank invited me to it, and as I walked up, I had no idea what it was. But it was a really fun event for a really great cause. Some of us gave some money out of our discretionary accounts. But next year, I hope you all can join us. And if you don't want to race, at least come and watch us and laugh at us. But it was a lot of fun, and again, for a really great cause. And for any of you who haven't been to that school, I highly encourage you to go take a tour. We just talked about the gem that is George Washington Carver in our community, and STEM, and Soilborne, and a lot of other places. I'm going to talk about Soilborne in a sec. But Chat is a really, really unique school that's helping some really great kids. And then finally, hats off again to Soilborne Farm for their Equinox event that they did two weekends ago. I don't know if I already brought that up at a council meeting, but again, a fantastic event, really highlighting that jewel of our community. I remember when I, I don't know if it was right after I got elected or while I was running the first time, and somebody said, "What is the best kept secret of Rancho Cordova?" Like, what is the thing that the people just don't know? And I always used to say, "The American River." But more and more, I really think it is. It's the American River, but it's that part of it where Soilborne is. The number of people that even live here that don't know that it exists is just amazing to me. And there are a handful of people that are very involved in this community that don't really know that it's out there, or know that it's out there, but have never actually been out to the farm stand and actually seen for their own eyes what it is. But that event continues to grow, and the number of funders and other nonprofit partners from around the region that showed up at that thing this year was just awe-inspiring to me, that they are now reaching far and wide in this community with that asset. So really great job to Sean and the rest of the crew out there.
Okay, so a couple of weeks ago, several of us took a tour of the Taint Farm over at Bradshaw, the large petroleum terminal, which was really quite interesting. I mean, for those of us who've been here for a very long time, and it's just kind of ubiquitous there in the middle of the community, and to get to be on site and walk around those big tanks was really pretty interesting. At the Rancho Cordova luncheon, Friday a week ago or so, the Park District gave a really great update of all the programs that they have going on and the construction on the, or reconstruction of the pool complex. At Regional Transit, they are severing their relationship with Para Transit, and all of the ADA accessibility ride services are going to be picked up by Regional Transit in there, because they now have a variety of different types and styles of vehicles that are much more suited, and they can do it with the existing infrastructure at Regional Transit, as opposed to hiring an outside consultant. Saturday or so, the 28th of September, I took grandkids down to the Crocker to see two special exhibits that were down there, including one on the, that was called "The Race to Promontory." It was this fascinating collection of slides from Stereoptigan about the building of the Transcontinental Railroad through the mountains. But then we ended up at the Farm to Fort Festival, which was also going on that weekend. And there were tons of people downtown. It was a very interesting thing, but I suspect there could have been as many people at Saulborn as there were down at the Farm to Fort Festival. Our city clerk asked me to be a part of a team that included Maria Nistad and our former, one of our former engineers, Brett Snipes, who is now Public Works Director in the City of Loomis, and talked to the city clerks about public presentations and the whole relationship between council and the clerk staff. And I always enjoy speaking to these people. It's, there's almost always one, at least one gentleman there. As Donald pointed out, we all have been, we've all spent the weekend at the airshow, but Friday night got a little more hectic because it was also homecoming at Cordova High. And so I was asked again to judge the class floats at Cordova High, and then ran over to the performers' welcome reception at Mather, and then ran back to the homecoming, where I drove kids in the homecoming parade, the royalty in the homecoming parade around the track, which is just the most delightful thing to do. The atmosphere at Cordova High in these, in this last couple of years has been so terrific, and it is just a dynamite place to be. The campus looks great. I think I said that a couple of weeks ago when they'd had their back-to-school night, but the campus looks great. The kids are having a good time, and it's a very cohesive group of students who all, they seem for the most part to like each other, to support each other, and the atmosphere at Cordova High is just absolutely terrific. And I didn't have to go all the way to Consumnas Boulevard. All I had to do was go out on the front porch and watch airplanes go out overhead.
I did that, too.
But it, but yeah, this week, it's, this is our 15th, this is our 15th year with the California Capital Air Show. And knock on wood, it is always successful. It is always safe. It just, it is an absolutely marvelous event, and there is no question that everybody in town, city staff, airshow staff, so many of our partners, from the police department to the FAA and everybody in between, worked so hard to put that together. And it takes an entire year to put together three glorious days, and it's well worth every man hour, or people hour, or person hour that's put into it. So, thank you all.
Thank you. Garrett?
First, I'd like to thank my good friend Donald for giving his wife up for at least two weeks now, and being a stay-at-home dad, because without Angela, she wouldn't have been able to put such an amazing airshow and as a group. That was a great show. It's just fun to see it change and morph and grow, and then go there and have my kids run rampant. And then I do catch them every once in a while, and they're gone again, and then they're running, and then they hear the planes jump, and they're diving underneath, because it's just, it's one of those unique events that shows Rancho's pride. Plus, we have so many people that are outside the region that come through it. It's amazing. I got to go to Talagana's Flower Festival, which actually happens to be one of the biggest celebrations of women in the Indian culture in the region, and it started here and it's kind of grown from here. And I would say our community, by my looks, has tripled, and everyone seems to be pregnant there, so I'm sure it's going to quadruple. So it is an amazing event, and I was very excited because they actually got up there and said, like, "Make sure everyone makes lots of babies, because we want this event to grow." And I was like, "This is awesome." I also went... I remind you, when you asked me the question of, "What does it take to get another high school in town?" And I, my answer was, "Procreate." They're knocking it out. There you go. There you go. I went to go see the Chamberlain Nursing College. That is an amazing college facility, super creepy, because they showed us a live birth, and the lady speaks into the robot, and then the robot pops out a baby. So I'm disturbed, but still an amazing college, and it's based right here in Rancho. And it's so hard to get nurses through. It's amazing.
This is the most interesting picture.
So disturbing. And the lady was talking in the mic, and the thing's eyes were moving, and this kind of plastic thing just shot out. They're like, "Garrett, don't you want to see more?" I was like, "No, I've seen it twice, and I really don't want to see it with a robot." So, the Religious Council of Rancho Cordova met, amazing group. They're getting ready to do so many good things in the city, and it's always interesting to see how they're all starting to partner with one another and help each other grow on the different events. I met with the library board meeting. There's some interesting changes coming alongside with their nonprofit, and there's years of fighting, but I'm sure that they're going to work all that out. Met with the cable commission. That's kind of troubling. So, sorry. I sat on the council, and this is where Comcast and all these guys pay fees to have franchise rights. And so they owe us about $10 million in back fees. And so now they tried to, basically, went to the cable commission and passed all these new rules to try to take away all the fees that we actually are paid. And they're trying to do it in the darker than night. So the more I find out about this and what's actually going on, I'll come back and report more. But we're getting ready to get everyone riled up, because we need them to sign letters, and then we're trying to meet Doris Matsui. And it's just crazy that they won't, they've, basically, there's something called a peg fee. And what they're saying is that because internet and TV now come over the same line, they don't have to pay us for both internet and TV. They could just pay us for one. And I was like, "You sneaky little, okay." And so it's weird, and it's just, the amount of fighting and law... Like, I joined the board, and we've been in lawsuits for the last three and a half years. And they haven't stopped, and they just come up with new lawsuits to sue on the new lawsuits. And I was like, "How many, I was like, "How many years we've been in court?" And they're like, "Since we started." And I was like, "This is nuts." It's nuts. That's much, and they're stealing from us. All right. I was approached to be a speaker at the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce State of the City. So I talked basically about how amazing Rancho Cordova is, and how we happen to have one of those cities that's very culturally diverse and blind, and seems to be such an amazing spot to open a business. And they were talking about all these stats, and I always brought up the fact that their stats don't include Rancho Cordova, and that if you don't open a business here, you don't have to worry about a lot of things you have to open up in other cities. So everyone's trying to move to Rancho. Cyrus, you should be expecting phone calls. I went to the ALF dinner. It's always good to see all these amazing people together and what the good things, because it's not just politicians, it's also business owners, leaders in the community, pastors, and whoever is really making an effect. I got given, at the Rancho Cordova High School, a year, not a year, a lifetime athletic pass for me and an individual. You were there, too. You were there. We were all there, and it was awesome. And Rancho Cordova is trying really hard this year. Trying. They're getting there. They got a whole new offense, and it takes years to pick up the new offense. They got a whole new offense, and it takes years to pick up the new offense, and so they'll, they'll get there. I had to go through this. Mitchell, side note, I went and saw Mitchell, and I was playing with Mitchell's soccer team. They had over 75 kids come out for tryouts this year for soccer, and the only reason they didn't make a B and a C team was because they didn't have the bus to be able to take them to soccer games. So if my two board members that sit on the Folsom Cordova Board could bring that up or find a way to get them, we could have had at least another, probably 150 kids because both schools had the same problem. There's so many soccer players because they feed in from RCAA, and you need a B and a C team, not because my favorite, my kid's team got beaten into the ground, but because that would allow us to have more teams to push the sport. Because soccer, I think, is going to be one of our premier sports, honestly. Like, there's so, because of San Juan Soccer Club, because so many pros are now in this area, that's a big thing for, we could capitalize on that, and that could be ours, because not, like, we trounce Folsom and El Rosales into the ground, like, just beat the tar out of them the minute we get up here, because we have so many comp teams that come from here and the South Sack. So if you could find a way to get them an extra bus, or we could do something with the Measure H funds, that would be a big thing for them, because then, I mean, they had to turn away literally, what, it was like 140 kids? Library Authority Board, I mean, not the authority, but we went to the Mastasiak honorary memorial barbecue with me and Donald. The Soilborne Farm Equinox Dinner was amazing and always delicious. Great job. Diane, are you still here?
No.
But she had a great golf tournament, probably the most fun I've seen us have at the golf tournament in a long time. There was tons of new businesses there, tons and tons of people. I did not win at golf. I did play scratch. I watched someone play, and I scratched myself, so that was scratch golf. And I met with Elk Grove Unified. Donald and I tried to get Weasel out of them when the high school's going into place. We got anywhere from five to seven years, but they did-
That's been the answer.
Huh? That's been the answer. But they did, of course, they do have a location, and it is in Rancho Cordova, so that's exciting. So the Sea Chats, I did bike a whole bunch, and then the best thing, and the newest thing we've done is the White Rock Road, the future of it. We brought a bunch of politicians and people together here today, and we are meeting to talk about what can be done to help White Rock Road get better and better in a faster pace. That's it.
Thank you. David?
Well, my colleagues have covered a bunch of stuff I was at, so Interfaith Council, Soilborne, the White Rock Tour we did today to highlight challenges we have on White Rock Road to support our businesses, business community. The airshow was awesome, but I got to attend, I think a couple of you did, too, the briefing that they do, the air boss briefing. Very, very entertaining. I would commend that to my colleagues if you haven't done that before. It's also a bit of a challenge because they have you as the lone elected official in the room, stand up and welcome everyone to Rancho Cordova, but you're only probably allowed about 25 words in front of that crowd. So yeah, you gotta keep it rolling. I went on a children's museum tour last week, which was awesome, particularly given our presentation earlier today. I'm really excited about where that organization is headed. The mayor and I have had a couple of city-county two-by-two meetings that I think have been nice and productive, good discussions, both philosophical and practical, so I've been enjoying that. RCAA met last week, the board. They are still expressing a lot of concern about scheduling issues they're having as organizations, particularly with regard to school district scheduling. And the real good news I have to report, though, is you can remember our efforts two years ago now to try to bail out the junior lancers when their junior football team was sort of failing. This year, I can report to you, they have record signups and participation in youth football in Rancho Cordova, so much so that in their known history, there have never been this many kids playing. So we went from almost no league to a whole bunch of kids playing football and a very healthy organization that's been spawned out of it. And I'll remind you guys that the way that actually physically happened was the head of soccer, the head of girls softball, and the head of Little League said, we can't allow football to fail. And so they stepped out of their roles, running their own leagues, went over there, helped out football, and when there was a financial gap, the city stepped in and said, we're taking care of the financial gap. And this is the result, very, very cool result. So all the effort that's gone into, you know, creating RCAA and getting all these sports organizations to work together, that's really a fine, a fine result to point at. Kinder Morgan Tour was really interesting. It also made us think about what we need to do to beautify the different boulevards we have in Rancho Cordova with respect to business presence and public perception of that business presence. And that was a great example of things the city can do, things the private business owner can do, things we can do together to improve their facility and the appearance of it. Cyrus Albert and I took a quick trip to DC. This is not a pleasant trip, per se, in terms of you fly there, you get a few hours' sleep, you lobby for an entire day, and you get on another plane, fly right back. But we did get a nice reception from the congressional offices, senators' offices, and Department of Transportation, and this was also to lobby for the White Rock Road funding through a build grant. We don't know exactly when that announcement will be made, probably within the month, though, this month.
Before November 12th.
Before the 12th, okay. I thought maybe it was going to be a little earlier than that. Well, sometimes they do a little bit early, maybe around the 1st, but we'll see. This is the seventh or eighth time we've applied, not exactly through this program, but for this project through various avenues. And the way it works there, the more often you show up, the more often you ask, the more real it appears to the person who's reading it, because they can see, wow, they've been here a lot, this is still a problem, and they keep, we keep building a better and better case. So fingers crossed, we'll see how well we do.
Is that for 5 million or 10 million?
16.2, is that what?
About 16.4.
16.4 was the request. And the last thing on my list was the Tallagana Festival, which was, as usual, a lot of fun, a little chaotic, but a great representation of that culture in our community, and I'm really happy we were able to host it. That's my report.
Thank you. Just a little bit about the airshow.
I'm sorry, I have one more thing I overlooked on my list here. At SECAG, we are dealing with the impact of the Federal Department of Transportation and federal EPA's rescinding the California SAFE rule. And I don't know if you guys are familiar with this, but basically California, a long time ago, requested the ability to set their own car emission standards. It's called SAFE. And the administration in DC and federal EPA has rescinded California's right to set our own standard for emissions. This is relevant because we're doing an MTP, and as we do our MTP, California regulations require that we get a sustainable communities certification, basically, through the state, and that is dependent upon assumptions that were made by the California version of SAFE. Now that California version of SAFE has been ruled off the table, that SES thing that California has in law is still there, but there's nothing to refer to. So basically, no MTPs can be processed by the state unless they grant a waiver, which they have indicated they're not willing to do, because they wish to make this a big fight with the federal government. So as a result of that, you will see SECAG moving very rapidly to approve the 2020 MTP in 2019. So if there's any surprise that you see in a sudden change in pace, we're trying to beat deadlines about when current SAFE structures will expire.
You know, David, and I didn't say this about the per capita fee at the air district, but Jim came and talked about that at our last meeting, and the thing that, because we're going to continue to talk about if this fee does make sense, but one of the things that's been talked about at the air district is not meeting the attainment goals that are set forth by EPA because there's not enough funding for it could actually cost, you know, if we're talking three or $4 million more a year to the air district, could cost SECAG and RT upwards of $100 million in some cases for not, for becoming a non-attainment area. So-
Or worse.
Right. One of the things we've been, we, because they really didn't package it that way. Actually, when they met with Cyrus and me first, Cyrus asked that specific question that, like, if you can make a case that, because for us, it'd be about $75,000 a year, right, in additional funding if we did like a dollar a person. But they're saying that could cost our local jurisdiction five to 10 times that if we end up becoming a non-attainment area. So again, as all of these things start to move around, the fact is California is raising all of these standards and expectations, yet there's not funding behind it to make sure that we're actually getting it. So I just wanted to point that out, and Jim actually did come by to explain that to the air district board last week or two weeks ago.
Yeah, it's a very messy, very fluid situation.
And there's a lot of money at stake.
We're just, we're just, if we are non-attainment area, then we can't get federal transportation dollars. We're cut off from that.
Essentially what it says, or drastically reduced in certain areas. What it basically says is you have to have your particulate matter per million has to be under X, and every few years, that number drops, and it's got to get lower and lower and lower. So it gets harder and harder to do it, and you only have so many programs to do it. If the air district gets to a point, and again, some of the people showing up to the air district meeting who hadn't been there in years and was saying, you know, you should be looking at your discretionary program, and what other, you know, budget cuts you can make, there are no discretionary programs at the air district. There's not one. They're all mandated. They're all mandatory, but a bunch of them don't have funding. And so as we've been talking about this, we are going to go back and have some more conversations with these jurisdictions to explain to them that it may be kind of a, you know, a penny wise and a pound foolish as far as if we don't want to fund these things, what it does to SECAG, what it does to RT, what it does to STA, if we don't get these, literally is EPA goes, yeah, Department of Transportation, don't fund California, or don't fund the Sacramento region. Yeah, it can get that bad. So talking about White Rock, there's a whole bunch of federal funding that's assumed to be a part of White Rock. That could just disappear.
So expect a little messiness-
Yep.
-in the next couple of months.
I was on the air board, and the EPA took three years to find out that our Sacramento wasn't, in this area of California, wasn't meeting the standards, and then they kind of forgot to count all the particulates that were coming out of the forest fires that were going on. So they finally got it, and we said, oh, Sacramento, I guess, made it after all. But I thought, it's completely insane for you not to look at everything when you're talking about something along that line. The airshow was, as everybody said, fantastic. It was another star in the heavens, so to speak. I was fortunate to be able to go out and welcome the snowbirds, snowbirds, this next week, next year, maybe. The, yeah. Anyway, yes, the pilots were out there, and it was kind of nice because the pilots didn't know that this was the, the first time we had it. Linda and I went out and met the pilots, and it was kind of foggy, and they said, that's the first time they've ever had any elected official come out and meet them anyplace. And I said, well, we're still meeting you now. So we were out there meeting them again this time, and it was pretty nice. I went to the Tallagana Association's Festival of Flowers. This is their fifth year with Tallagana, and as Garrett said, they have been expanding, they have been doing some wonderful things, but they really enjoy, they celebrate being in Rancho Cordova because there are so many positive things that happen here, and it doesn't happen in other places. So they're really very happy to be here. In that celebration, there was, Donald Tolle was there, Garrett was there, I was there, Terry was there. We had a lot of people. It was just a very good celebration. It was enjoyable. The Soilborne Farms, they are doing some wonderful things out at the elementary schools. They're going out there and showing the kids how to grow in those gardens that are out there in the schools. They're helping right now. The last school that doesn't have a garden is the Riverview STEM Academy. We tried again, so I'll be talking to the principal tomorrow to find out if they got everything going. They finally got the, the boxes were done by the scouts, and the scout boxes have been empty for about two years. So they're supposed to get things done and have it now for the kids there, too. I hope that gets done. And the Chamberlain University, I was really kind of interested in that because my mother was a registered nurse. And when I went there and I saw that, and they were saying there are so many that are retiring, and there are so many that they're short of in California and actually in the United States. So they are, they had some very happy students who were, some were just graduating, some were next semester they'll be graduating, and, but they're really bringing in some good students to become nurses, and those nurses are definitely needed. So that's something that Rancho Cordova also is doing to help everyone, actually, all the nurses that are going to be coming out of Chamberlain. So I think that's what I've got, and talk to our city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All in the interest of time, I would be brief, and most everything has already been mentioned. Just wanted to point out that the mayor, several members of our police department and our communication team, we all attended a breakfast called United withstand in honor of our fallen officer Mark Astasiak. Sheriff Scott Jones was to speak at that event, and it was very meaningful. The family of Mark were also recognized and acknowledged in that setting. The other thing was that I, we also just wanted to mention about the airshow and all the accolades that you, we've heard about the wonderful show. I just want to make sure that we also acknowledge the great work of city staff. We had our entire police department that was out and about for the safety of the event. We had our public works team that had done a great deal of work in traffic management, traffic work, and our communications team that helped with advertising and marketing the event. So thank you, staff, city staff, and appreciate the work well done. And on a lighter note, and after I left the airshow last night, I stopped by the Korean Market, had a meeting with the owner, and realized that there is a large gathering of the Korean community, apparently a rock star, a Korean rock star was performing. So I was asked to make a statement, a welcoming statement, and Young Nam Choi, who is a rock star from the '70s, very well-known, had an audience of over 250 people. So I was put on the spot, and so we welcomed him on behalf of the city. It was a great event, and it really shows it's another sign of our cultural diversity of this community. So it was a wonderful event. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Very good. Thank you, Cyrus. Okay, I'm going down to 13. Consent calendar items, consent calendar items consists of matters deemed routine and non-controversial by a staff, unless a member of the council wishes to pull an item for individual consideration. All items will be approved by one motion. I'm going to pull 13.2. Are there any other items the council wishes to pull?
Seeing, seeing none, I'll move the calendar.
The ballots.
Give a roll call on the ones that are 13-1 to 13-4.
Councilmember Terry.
Aye.
Councilmember Budge.
Yes.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Sander.
Aye.
Mayor McGarvey.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, would you read the 13.2, please?
The, the subject for 13.2 is a resolution declaring the results of the mail ballot election relating to the imposition of the annual stormwater utility fee on the Stone Creek Industrial Center project in the city of Rancho Cordova. A replacement staff report was presented to the council at the dais this evening. It's also available for the public in the back. We just wanted everybody to know of that correction before the council voted.
I will move approval of 13.2.
Second.
Thank you. Second, okay. Roll call, please.
I didn't get the second. Who was the second?
Garrett.
Oh, thank you. Councilmember Terry.
Aye.
Councilmember Budge.
Yes.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Sander.
Aye.
Mayor McGarvey.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Consent public hearing items, consent public hearing items consists of matters deemed routine and non-controversial by staff unless a member of the council wishes to pull an item for individual consideration. All items will be approved by one motion. Anyone wishes to pull an item on this?
Seeing none, I'll move the calendar.
Bob needs to open the public hearing.
I have to open up the public hearing? Do we have anyone that wishes to speak on that?
I do not have anyone who wants to speak on the public, consent public hearing. No.
All right, then have a motion in a second for, okay.
We have a motion from Councilmember Terry.
Second.
Second. Thank you.
Roll call then, please.
Councilmember Terry.
Aye.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Aye.
Councilmember Budge.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sander.
Aye.
Mayor McGarvey.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. I remember 15, the public hearing items. Ask the city clerk to announce the subject, please.
Discussion of the First Amendment to the Elliott Development Agreement for Rio del Oro Phase I.
And we'll have our staff to report, please. And we'll have our staff to report, please.
Good evening, Mayor McGarvey and councilmembers. Elizabeth Barkman, Community Development Director, and I have Albert co-presenting. Let me introduce her.
Good evening, Mayor McGarvey and councilmembers. Albert Stricker with the Public Works Department.
So we're here to talk to you tonight about some discussions we've been having on Rio del Oro. And our goals for tonight are we want to brief council on the agreed upon terms for our First Amendment. We'll brief council on city project on White Rock Road. And at the end, we're just going to request council to give direction on the terms of the First Amendment, see if you have any questions about that. So the existing development agreement was approved in 2016. It had a fee incentive package for seven years or 1,200 units and also had a cash advancement when the developer was going to construct, had a requirement to construct White Rock Road to Rancho Cordova Parkway. That incentive deal failed to produce development as we had hoped. So based on council direction, we re-engaged and renewed discussions with Elliott Homes to find ways to initiate development of the site. So we're pleased to report that we have reached terms of a new amendment which enables Elliott Homes to initiate activities that will result in the commitments of construction in 2020 with some onsite grading. I actually think I have a deeper voice than you right now. Right? Thank you.
I was looking around the room trying to figure out who's talking.
Yeah.
It's fine, you're doing great.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Until I start coughing. So under the terms of this proposed new First Amendment that we're presenting tonight, the city is assuming the obligation for constructing White Rock Road. The revised incentive package has a $2,500 fee reduction for Phase One only. Developer has a schedule for onsite construction with hopes to commence grading in the fall of 2020. They'll time their underground utilities with the city's project. They hope to commence subdivision improvements in May of 2021 and hope to pull building permit around November 2021. We do have a provision that they must commence production homes by November 2023, realizing that, you know, their goals are obviously to get going as soon as they can. And with that, I want to turn it over to Albert, who's going to talk about White Rock Road.
Thank you, Elizabeth. White Rock Road from Sunrise Boulevard to the city limits and even beyond to Grantline Road is critically important as parallel capacity to US 50 and connecting communities both within Rancho Cordova and beyond to the 65,000 jobs within the city of Rancho Cordova. The city has secured funding to construct from Sunrise Boulevard improvements to White Rock Road out to Rancho Cordova Parkway. And this is critical infrastructure for the first phase of Rio del Oro. It's important as an economic development driver and promotes housing closer to jobs and it will significantly improve the condition and safety of the road. Within these limits from Sunrise Boulevard out to the future intersection with Rancho Cordova Parkway, there are two distinct sections, that being from Sunrise to Fitzgerald and then Fitzgerald out to Rancho Cordova Parkway. The section from generally Sunrise Boulevard to Fitzgerald Road is an urban environment and the main access into Costco off of White Rock Road is a significant source of congestion. It's an impediment to future growth and improvements are required to ease congestion at this location and increase efficiency. So this, this section of the project will redirect left turn traffic to Gold Valley and that will be accomplished by installing a median along White Rock Road and then realigning a drive aisle within the Costco lot to a new driveway at that location and access will be better facilitated by a signal at Gold Valley. This also accommodates improvements that Costco is looking to do where they're relocating their gas station pumps from the current location close to the corner of White Rock Road and Gold Valley Drive is their proposal. The project will also resurface the roadway. As we extend east of Lou Young, it is a very different environment. White Rock Road is narrow without shoulders and two, two lane road. So we have a very different approach for this section of White Rock Road and that will be to rebuild and realign White Rock Road within that section. The work will include interim two eastbound and two westbound lanes with a wide median. The reason I call that interim, it'll be for the foreseeable future, for several years out, that this will function really well, but it'll, in ultimately, this is a six lane road. Will be.
Albert, as that, as that turns into a six lane road, does the median go away or do, does the, do the sides go away?
Thank you. In this first phase fronting Rio del Oro, the south side, the south two lanes and the frontage are being constructed. And so where it says temporary median in that figure, that is another lane that will be constructed there. And so that'll give us three lanes eastbound and then westbound, there'll be one additional lane at the, at the far left side of your figure, which is the north side of that road. So one new lane inside in the median and one new lane on the north side of the road will bring us to six. So again, this is rebuilding and realigning White Rock Road. There will be the new signal at Gold Valley Drive that I mentioned earlier. Also, three new signals in addition will be constructed, one at Fitzgerald or Lou Young and our engineers are still evaluating the best location for that and we can provide additional information. A new signal at R and L, which is the main entrance to Elliott's new subdivision and a new signal at Rancho Cordova Parkway. The scheduling and funding for the project, the Sunrise to Fitzgerald section is scheduled to start construction early 20 and, and be completed by the end of next year. And then from Fitzgerald out to Rancho Cordova Parkway, we're scheduled to start construction fall of next year into fall of 2021. The overall estimated project cost is about $16 million. Those are the roadway projects and I will hand it back to Elizabeth.
Thank you. So originally tonight, we had planned to introduce an ordinance that would adopt the First Amendment. However, we recently discovered a discrepancy in the ownership of the 2016 ARDA. So before we can take action on the First Amendment, we need to go back and re-adopt the ARDA. And that's partly just to correct the name of the exact Elliott entity that has ownership. We also have to go back and re-adopt the Affordable Housing Plan just to correct that ownership as well. So our plan is to return at the next council meeting with actions on both the amended and restated development agreement, the First Amendment, and the Affordable Housing Plan.
On consent calendar.
Yeah, I'll have a slide on that next. So at this point, I just wanted to pause and see if you had any questions. I just wanted to hear that, you know, we're good to go on the terms of the First Amendment or take any further direction if you have it. If you don't, I'll move on to the next steps.
Okay, I'm going to open up the public hearing and ask if we have anyone who wants to speak on that.
I do. Couple thanks. I'd like to go last.
No, no, I would just make a room. Thank you.
He didn't want to talk.
Have a couple thank yous here.
Price Walker with Elliott Homes, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. A lot of, a lot of thank yous, actually. I'm just really glad to be here tonight. It's been a long time coming. We've, we've beaten up Elizabeth, I guess, so bad she can hardly talk now. But I just want to really, really thank, you know, Cyrus and his staff, especially Elizabeth and Albert for working with us. We've been at this for a while. We were on it a week at a time for about six months straight. And it doesn't look like very much to it now, but there is a lot in there and a lot of details that, that we've gotten hammered out and it looks like now, you know, in hindsight, where the timing is, was, is perfect. You know, you're going to be out there finishing the road, doing the road, same time we're going to be building the subdivision. We didn't really have very good access into this project as you saw today on our little bus ride. It's not a very safe spot out there. So the timing really couldn't be better for us now and we have grading plans into the city already and barring something really strange, we'll be starting work May 1st. So we're excited. Thank you very much. And I'm good with the terms as they are and hope to come back in two weeks on the consent calendar. I'll answer any questions. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Price. Always a pleasure to work with you. So this is the last slide and it's really just telling you, we're planning to come back with the consent public hearing item on October 21st. I don't think we need to repeat this discussion. We'll re-adopt the ARDA, we'll approve a First Amendment to the ARDA, and we will also have to re-adopt the Affordable Housing Plan as well. So that's it.
Okay, so we're going to be coming back at the next council meeting about the fifteen point one and that's the Rio del Oro that we're going to be talking about and voting on. Okay. Anyone want to speak on this item?
Mr. Mayor, I, I just wanted to also take this opportunity and thank Price, Price Walker and his team for working on this. As Price mentioned, we started talking about this probably what, two, three years ago and there's been a lot of back and forth and in very productive discussions. I would like to thank our staff, Elizabeth, Albert and Adam, bringing this to, to the finish line. So this is the culmination of a lot of good work that has gone in the background. So very exciting. This is, as many people already know, this Rio del Oro is an extremely significant project for the city. It's a bridge between what I call the new and the old and it can, it opens up a vast area of the city to a new commercial and industrial space that we are basically depleted now. So great opportunity for the city. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. So that'll be for next council meeting going on.
We don't need a motion to continue.
Since this, since the public hearing notice was already published, we just wanted to, for you to hear the terms of the agreement and then we will proceed with finalizing the documents.
Yeah, we've already noticed for the 21st separately, so we're good.
Thanks. Yeah, I just want to say thank you to Elliott Homes and everybody else. I know, I, I want to say, we were in American River Room for a luncheon with the chamber a few years ago, thinking we were kind of where hopefully we are today. So I'm, I'm really pleased to, to see this back on track because again, I mean, we've talked about it before, that plot of land is bigger than all of downtown Sacramento.
Yep.
It is an enormous opportunity for our community to continue to grow and to, not just for housing, but for industrial space, commercial space.
Recreation.
Yep. Yeah, I mean, that's our regional park, there's all kinds of stuff over there at school that needs to get unlocked. So thank you very much.
Great job, guys.
Yeah, great job. Excellent. All right, and going on to item fifteen point two, and ask our city clerk to announce the subject, please.
T-Mobile Antenna Addition Conditional Use Permit Amendment, project number DD 9881, located at 10653 Coloma Road.
Thank you. And I'll ask our staff for the report, please.
Good evening, Mayor and City Councilmembers. June Cows with the Planning Department. The project being reviewed tonight is the T-Mobile Existing Telecommunication Edition. The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit amendment for the following. Extend the height by 10 feet of an existing pole from 60 feet to 70 feet. Install 15 new antennas. Now those antennas would extend five feet beyond the proposed monopole height and that would be an overall height of 75 feet in addition of 310 square feet of the ground area. So the general, the location is behind the shopping center, buildings on the northeast corner, McGregor Drive and Coloma Road. So here's a closer look at it. The existing telecommunication facility was approved by Sacramento County in June of 2002. And then in November 2002, a conditional use permit amendment was approved for additional antennas. And this slide shows proposed site plan and elevation. The red outline area is the proposed new ground area. The next few slides will show existing and proposed views. This one is from McGregor Drive. From Coloma Road. And this one's from Forest Lake Drive. This is the existing and then proposed views of the antennas. The applicant provided coverage maps and the one on the left shows existing no antennas. The red circle shows the site and then the light green pixels show little or no signal coverage. The dark green pixel shows strong signal coverage and of course, on the right, the map shows the proposed antennas at the overall height of 75 feet. Staff requested that the applicant provides a screening device. We always look at trying to mask that, but the screening attempts made the proposed antennas more visually obtrusive than the standalone proposed antennas without screening. Staff recommends the city council find project to be in compliance with CEQA as exempt to the Section 15303 and adopt the resolution for the conditional use permit amendment for the T-Mobile facility, project number 9881, subject to findings, project plans, and conditions of approval. And with that, if you have any questions, and the applicant is here.
I, yeah, I would ask one, June, what kind of screening proposals were made?
Well, in talking with the applicant, we were looking at retrofitting that pole for anything of a tree, but the pole was located or built or erected in 2002. So structural issues, they needed a screening device that would allow, and I think the applicant can speak to, the heating of the antennas was a problem. We looked at venting as, like a venting material of holes within that. And so, you know, this was what we ended up, a vent material. There is some overheating issues with the antennas as stated by the applicant.
I'm sorry, I don't support the proposal.
All right. Anything from the, I'll just go on to public hearing right now. Do we have anyone in the audience which is to speak on this item? We have any cards?
I have one speaker card, Al Gonzalez. Al, you'll have three minutes.
Can I speak?
Sure.
My name's Elsie D. Gonzalez. I'm the owner of a property located on the corner of Coloma and McGregor. My property borders Mr. Song's property for approximately 349 feet on the southwest corner of his property. I do not oppose the extension of the tower even though it is not allowed under Village Center mixed-use zoning. The concern I have is that the city has stalled the Village Center mixed-use project on Coloma for over 13 years. I've opposed this rezoning from the onset of the general plan. This zoning has prevented me from selling the property. This action and the adamant stance the city has taken on the Village Center mixed-use zoning has caused a lawsuit to be filed against me. zoning has caused a lawsuit to be filed against me. The lack of due diligence on part of the city by citing on the City Ranch Cordova website that vehicles are not permitted on the property has caused two potential buyers from buying the property. In doing so, the city has violated a written agreement that we have in place. This problem has been only partially addressed by Mr. Micah Runner. The city has denied various businesses from coming on the, onto my property, even though they were allowed under Village Center mixed-use. Example, check cashing in Starbucks back in early 2000s when we started, when we built the building. Just to mention, a couple, on the list goes on. Allowing my competitors within two blocks away from my business to sell vehicles on a parcel that was originally under, under a use permit and was changed to a commercial mixed-use. This move was motivated by the fact that the owner-spouse of this parcel was the head buyer of real estate for the state of California, putting me at a disadvantage. The council members have failed to address this issue. I have sent every council member numerous emails requesting a meeting with the council members, but no one has responded. In closing, I find this very troubling. I am requesting that my original zoning be given back, as Village Center mixed-use has been stalled for over 13 years, or at least be allowed to sell vehicles like my other two competitors. I have invested over $500,000 in your plan of Village Center mixed-use by specking out the building to your city's planners' conditions to build, only to find that this zoning is very prohibiting, and that's all I have to say. And I think that you guys, you guys are doing a job in Rancho. Rancho's expanding, I understand all this, but you have to consider the people who have put Rancho on the map. I'm a businessman that's been in Rancho since 1976, and I've, I was, I bought that building when that neighborhood was downhill. The shopping center behind me was closed, there was trash in the back.
Your time is up, please wrap up your comments.
Thank you.
I don't really have a comment about that. I just wanted to say that in the future, we might want to remind speakers that if they want to make a comment about something that's not on the agenda, because what he just talked about is not on the agenda, that would be public comment, not an item on the agenda.
Well, I addressed it because what happened is that it has to do, let me talk, sir. Let me talk. I addressed this.
Sir, let me remind you, you're at my meeting, I am not at yours. I, you got your three minutes, I'm getting to talk now.
You're a public servant, and you don't treat me like this, okay? And what I'm saying is the reason I--
Sir, sir, your time has expired. Thank you.
Mr. Gonzalez, point of order. Mr. Gonzalez, you can address this outside of the meeting.
Wait, 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 wait.
And this is the problem we have in the city, because people like you are rude to me. I have not been rude to you, and you don't have to be rude to me.
Sir, the only thing I was telling you--
If it was a parking lot and you talked to me like that, things would be different. Then those two gentlemen would be involved. Remember that, sir.
Have a nice night.
Sorry for the interruption.
And the item goes on, so.
Just a, just a point of reference. He had given some indication to staff that he was going to do something that might address the actual project at hand at the time.
Yeah, I just want to remind folks that, again, if somebody wants to make a comment about something that's not on the agenda, and this was not on the agenda, it should have been public comment. That's all I want to add, to remind people.
Anyone else to comment on this?
No.
There are comments that were just made by Mr. Gonzalez that on their face would warrant some, some look by the city manager. I'm saying on, on the face, you know, what he's just handed this, just handed us this. I would trust you do that in regular course of business.
Yes.
And just a note for the public, we apologize that he only gave out five copies. We'll make a copy of what he just handed out available to the public.
You can have mine. It's hard.
Is anyone else in the audience which is to speak on this item? If not, I'm closing public comment and asking for a motion.
We need to talk about this first.
We can discuss a little, yeah.
Yeah.
I realize this was approved under, by Sacramento County. That makes, that's one of the several projects that were approved by Sacramento County in the summer of 2002, before we were on the ballot, after we had been approved to be on the ballot, but before we were, before the election rolled around. There was so much negative comment about this at the time because of its appearance. And the people that actually, the neighborhood immediately behind the shopping center was not a neighborhood that deserved to have this kind of visual intrusion in it. Those were houses that were built decades ago under special federal affordable housing programs, and still probably continue to have challenges in those neighborhoods. The proposal does absolutely nothing except make a bad situation worse, from my perspective. And I'm sorry that the applicant feels that they don't have coverage in the area, and I'm sorry that they feel that there's nothing they can do to enhance the appearance of this particular cell tower. But adding another tier to it, for the entire world to see from 360 degrees around, is not the kind of image that I personally would like to see in Rancho Cordova. So, I wouldn't make a motion for it, and I kind of, and I will not vote for it.
David?
I would just add to what Linda said, this is a troubling installation for me as well. Bob, you and I were on Corp PAC back before incorporation. Corp PAC was the planning council that existed here in Rancho Cordova, and we had the power to advise the county on whether or not to approve planning amendments and planning projects, but we couldn't actually block them. What, what we did at Corp PAC was actually revolutionate the time, we won an award for it, was we came up with a set of requirements and suggestions, a mix, of what new cell tower proposals had to have in them. And it was things like, you had to have a coverage map in your application, you had to show us realistic photo views of what the facility was going to look like, you had to show us where your other sites were, things like that, that the county previous to that was not requesting of any applicant. So, we did that, and we processed this one, and as I, as I recall, we did not support this one, but the county did, as Linda said, right before we were, we were incorporated. We did approve, we are not in this council completely opposed to, to cell towers. We did approve a new one, not far across the street from--
This is what I was going to ask the same.
From this site. So, colocation at that site, which is fully screened, would make a heck of a lot more sense than adding anything to this one. I think for me to consider allowing, adding anything to this one, we would have to deal with the existing blight that's out there on that pole. They would have to modify it in such a way that it was art, or more hidden, or something. It would, it would have to have some positive characteristic, dealing with what's already there, before I would say, sure, go ahead and add more, add more to it. Because right now, I just view it as blight, it's on a major corridor. All those residents in that neighborhood can see that for, for a ways in. It does nothing to promote the business that's going on at that center, or around that, around that property.
So, you're thinking of the antenna that's there by the church, but it looks like it's part of the church rather than being an antenna?
That's a good installation.
Right.
And, and that's one we voted on that is significantly taller than what this is.
Right.
So, yeah, I guess my, even when I read this, I just kind of wondered, like, why here? Although, it's already there, they're just making it taller. Is that, is that what I'm understanding? There's a pole there now, they want to make it taller. Okay. So, yeah, I would say, I'd rather, I'd rather see it where we're talking about, or I'd like to have an answer as to why it can't go there, before I would be comfortable even considering this one. So, again, I'm not necessarily saying I'm ready to vote no, but I'm not, definitely not ready to vote yes, until I know why it can't go near the church.
Through the mirror, if I may. I'm, just to help guide the council in your discussions, the required findings for this are on page 11. Actually, I'll wait to hear from the applicant. You've closed the, I believe you closed the hearing, so you--
Public comment of the, as I'm leaving this open for the applicant, that's different, in my opinion, than the, yes, general public with a card, so.
You would reopen the public hearing and allow the applicant to speak?
Yes.
Greetings, everyone. My name is Jerry Smith, I'm with T-Mobile, and to address Councilmember Terry's question about why not go to the Verizon Tower, that's southeast of where we're proposing, we're looking to cover the residents and T-Mobile customers that are to the, the west of that area, and we would not be able to adequately provide in-building coverage to our customers, or to new customers that are, that are not covered well with our existing sites in the neighborhood.
Well, the, the church is actually west of this location.
Correct. And we wanted to be further west. Do you guys have a photo?
Yeah, no, the, the church is to the east of this site.
Yes.
Not far, but it's like a block to the east, right?
No.
It's near Rancho Cordova Apartments.
Oh, no, you're right, you're right, sorry.
It's to the east, it's further to the east.
No, you're right. It is east, yeah.
It's towards sunrise.
You're right. It's Benito.
And so, where we'd like to cover are people to the west of McGregor and the buildings on Coloma and McGregor, where we'd, we'd have less of an opportunity or ability to provide service to those corners if we were to go further east.
And the way you described, I just want to understand, we've had very few of these since I've been on council, and in seven years, I've voted on like three of these, or that came for a, a discussion. You said that was a Verizon Tower.
I believe it is.
When, when we approved these, they, the owners were, who, that owned the, the tower said that they could work with any carriers. Is--
That is true.
Do they end up getting exclusive deals? What, from my understanding, they had said that odds are they would have two to three even more carriers within one tower.
That is true.
Okay.
However, we have sites a little bit further east of the, the church tower, that we cover that area fairly well with that one site. We need to go closer to American River to cover the homes to the, the south of American River, or to the north of--
And small cell isn't, isn't an option for you here?
Not at this point in time, no.
How about the light towers at Cordova High? They have lots of room.
I don't know where they are at in conjunction with this location.
They're west about a mile.
And north a little bit.
Right, and what we're talking about right now is the antenna, what we're looking at right now is north of Coloma, and the, one for the church is south of Coloma, and it's about a block to the east of the, this antenna. So, exactly how much time and space it is from here, one mile, mile and a half, something like that, to Cordova High, but I'm not sure, because those are, as you said, Linda, those are very tall, and you could put a lot of antennas on those, they have some.
They have some antennas already, very successfully.
The church side is slightly-- I'm sorry, that church side, it's First Baptist, isn't it? First Baptist Church?
Yeah, it is, it is.
Yeah, so that's to the northeast of the, of the site here.
It is east.
Less than a, less than a block.
It mixing up the corners.
Right, the church side is about 550 feet--
Yeah.
--to the northeast.
And then, isn't it like, like, it's considerably taller than this one?
It might be.
Yeah.
Not sure.
Because it's, this is a one-story building, and how tall is that pole?
60 feet.
No, no, the one that's, the one that's on this building?
Yeah, it's 60 feet.
60 feet, okay.
And they want to take it to 75.
Yeah, that other thing's over 100.
And, and part of the reason that it's such an imposition on the, a visual imposition on the neighborhood, is the fact that this is, this is a ledge, this is a hill, and then you go down, you know, it's like going down into the meadows. You go down towards the river from here. So, not only is it tall to begin with, and naked, but it's also standing on top of a hill. So, from, if you were at the intersection of McGregor and Coliseum, it would look even taller than 75 feet from the elevation at that point.
Is it possible to see it from Coliseum and McGregor?
Yes.
Okay. It's just barely off this, this image.
Where the other one is.
Right over here.
It's across--
Go north on McGregor towards the river.
It's literally across the street from those apartments. Well, so, I think you're hearing that we'd like you to at least explore some other options, and see, see if there's something else that, that might work. That would be what I would encourage you to do.
Very well, thank you.
So, I would be happy to move to continue this.
I would second.
I'd second that.
So, let's ask the applicant, what's a timeframe a month?
And perhaps, before you do so, I could offer a little bit of guidance about what findings we might focus on, if that would be helpful to, to the council.
Sure.
Well, in general, and you're right, Adam, and I read your, I read the findings, our findings are a little more detailed, because the general statement's always been, you know, it has to not be an intrusion on the health, safety, and general welfare of a neighborhood. I mean, when you, when you approve a use permit.
I, I was offering to help, not to be concerned or critical of the potential direction by the council to do so. I think that what you've been talking about, for staff's benefit, to, in my opinion, relates very closely to the issues that are addressed primarily in the second finding that you have there on page 11 of 12. The negative impacts of the proposed use on adjacent properties and on the public can be mitigated through, could be, whether or not they could be mitigated through application of code standards or other reasonable conditions of approval. You've been talking very specifically about the potential for the visual and other impacts of the site to be mitigated or not. Secondly, you've spent considerable time talking about the first finding, whether or not the site, size, dimensions, location, topography, the, the height on the ledge, et cetera, and the access are adequate for the needs of the proposed use, considering building mass parking, traffic noise, vibration, exhaustion, emissions, light glare, erosion, dust, visibility, safety, and aesthetic considerations. And so, I think what we might hear for staff's benefit is that you'd like us to come back with a discussion about a balancing of the possibility of, if you'd like us to come back with findings of denial, we would certainly want that direction, but at least a discussion of, of site, of alternatives to this location, or alternatives to the aesthetic impacts that you've just described here. The other thing I think that, that the applicant's comments suggest is, the applicant chose to use words such as "reduced opportunity to cover." The applicant didn't say that there would be no coverage, or that this was the only location. So, I think that the, the city has an obligation to not effectively stop the rollout of new telecommunications technologies, but here, we were, at least hearing from the applicant so far in the record, words that were much more, much more mild than, than there's no alternative to the site.
And I agree with that. So, I would probably continue this to Monday, the 4th of November.
Staff?
That's two meetings from now.
I mean, if, if it has to go beyond that, but yeah, I think we could give that guidance at least here.
Unless you'd like a longer timeframe.
That would give us enough time to explore some options.
Okay, super. Then that would be the--
In absent direction, we would be returning with a further discussion, perhaps awaiting direction that would then come at a subsequent meeting about whether to approve or deny. So, we might then come back.
Right.
June, I guess I'm, I'm not hearing, I'm not hearing them yet ready to say whether or not the accompanied, accompanying action on that agenda would be a resolution of approval or a resolution of denial.
No, but more of a proposal for either, as you said, alternate location or alternate physical characteristics.
Or why alternative locations would not address the need to provide the technology to the community.
Well, I think it'd give us a month, and then a month, to see what other possibilities there may be. So, I think that's what we're probably going to do, is to carry it on for another two city council meetings until the one in November. council meetings until the one in November, two, a month from now. Is that something that the council approves?
Yep.
Yes.
Linda, Garrett, you guys are going to approve that, to carry it for another month, like you said?
Ms. Grills, any other direction that would be helpful to you and your applicant?
Right. I made the motion. And I think Donald seconded it.
Moke and listen to carry it. I don't think we need a vote call on that, do we? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Be unanimous.
Okay, thank you. Read them with this one. On, number 16, I ask a city clerk to announce the subject, please. This is informational only.
Update on the Mill Station District, formerly known as the Civic Center Development Project.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, Micah Runner, Deputy City Manager. Thank you for having me this evening. Excited to come to you and talk about the Mill Station District, which is also sometimes called the Civic Center Project. This is really a update on where we're at with the process for this project, and really an overview of the process that we'll be going through moving forward and making a recommendation at a later date to City Council and some other process along with that, and want to update you on what that process may look like. So a little bit of background, the City Council held four visioning sessions about the Civic Center, potential Civic Center Project, talked about site selection, talked about identifying different programs, different activities that would be on these, on this, on this site, conducted some gap analysis for certain uses, like performing arts and event space and indoor recreation. We then decided to release an offering memorandum to obtain letters of interest from the development community about what kind of larger public-private partnership that could happen at this site. And as we're here to report out, we received eight letters of interest from different groups who were interested in the project, a very diverse set of, of interest from some locals, statewide, some national interest as well in the, in the project. And as part of that, wanted to give you a little bit of a range of some of the proposed elements that were in the proposals. There were, housing was, was a part of most all of the potential submittals. They ranged from 120 units all the way up to 800 units as part of the, the project. Also ranged from suggestions for affordable, for market rate, for market housing, for senior housing, so quite a blend of some different ideas that, that came across around the housing piece of it. There was discussion around community center space. The square footage is ranged from 20 to 60,000 square feet of programmable community space. That could mean a lot of different, different types of things. And when we talk about square footages for this project, these aren't set in stone, these were just kind of renderings and just some examples of what things could look like, some, some scaling, some scoping. So these are by not, by no means set in stone, but really to give you a flavor of kind of the, the scale and size of some of the suggestions. And then commercial retail space, anywhere from 5,000 to 60,000 square feet of entertainment and retail and services space. And then we have another category we're calling other amenities, which was food truck courts, art studios, exhibit space, bowling alleys, movie theaters.
Dutch pros.
Dutch, no, no specific Dutch pros were, were called out, but splash pad, food home.
All the kids who want Dutch pros.
They do. And a dog park was even in one of the proposals. So a really, a good range of types of interest and types of amenities, but it was really consistent overall with what we were looking for as far as a response. And so overall, we were very happy with the quality and the, and the quantity of the, of the interested groups. And as we look at next steps, wanted to talk a little bit about what it looks like we'll be recommending to, to go through this process moving forward to try to narrow the selection of those eight down to a final recommendation. And so over October, November, we'll be working with an evaluation committee to narrow down the top three projects, the top three groups that the committee will recommend to have come to actually City Council and present on December 2nd, is the idea, that the top three will come and do a presentation. This isn't a selection, this isn't a selection process at that time, but really to give you a flavor and feel for the teams that were part of the final three recommendation. And then at that point, there will also be some additional information that the evaluation committee will request from the different groups. And after the presentation, after receiving some additional information, the committee will then bring back a recommendation for a selection of a single developer group to, to move forward with exclusive right to negotiate. And this, what this really does is it allows us to move forward and negotiate with one particular group to really work out all of the details associated with what this project may look like, and really are excited about what that, what that may look like. Just a little bit on the evaluation committee, really have intent, intent to make this a very broad group of individuals who are helping us work on narrowing this, this group down with a lot of our regional partners like Secog and Community, Cordova Community Council, Regional Transit, will all be, will be asked to be a part of the, the team and evaluation to narrow the group down to three and then one. And that's, as we look at the next steps, really what you all have to look forward to on the next couple of months in, in reviewing these projects. Thank you.
Sounds super.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks for the update. Okay, I, I will just say that it was really fun to, you know, receive a lot of phone calls from, from folks who are interested in this, but then also making the comparison to a similar project in the south area that I believe is with RT. So, it wasn't RT? I thought it was RT. Maybe it was the county. But there is another project out there, and there was a lot of folks expressing how much more attractive this project was than other ones in, in the region. So kudos to staff and everybody else that kind of put this together. You know, I think we put our best foot forward on it, so great job.
Yeah, I heard from at least seven people that are all very interested in the project. I don't know how many submitted, because I haven't seen it, but it was interesting that people were pulling me aside, be like, hey, do you, this project? And we get in there, and I'm like, what? Yes, yes. So very exciting. I can't wait to see what it's going to look like.
I think at some point, I would like to see the range of applications. I think this process, if you lined out, makes sense. Someone's got to do a little more due diligence. I, I would want to hope that we have some sort of developer or person with business expertise to sort of evaluate the feasibility of the various proposals coming forward. You know, if there's a, if there's a red herring there, that's definitely got to be investigated. Or, you know, the people who will be doing this evaluation, you might see something in one that doesn't appear in another, that if you combine the two, would be interesting. So that, that sort of opportunity shouldn't be ignored either.
That's a really good point, David.
Well, I think that's a pretty good layout, I think, of what the council's thinking, and thank you for giving us the information. And we're looking forward to seeing what can be given to us when you get down to those three. And, but it's really interesting to see what, people are interested in this, because it is a wonderful spot. So we have to see what can be done with it. Thank you. Okay. Done with this one, then on to 17.
I have a, I have a public speaker comment card for this item. So Mary Nessel, if you'd like to come forward.
Sorry about that.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and Council. So my name's Mary Nessel. I live in Cordova Meadows, and I'm walking distance to the location of this proposed site, so I'm extremely excited about it and just have some opinions, and so I'm going to share them with you. So of these four items that are outlined here, commercial and retail would be my last choice, because we have a lot of vacant commercial and retail space in the city already, so let's not add to it. In the Corrigan and Plaza area and the Target Shopping Center, there are vacant stores already, so that's my thought on that one. On housing, I'm always in favor of affordable and especially senior housing, but I think this lot is better served for other purposes. And my favorite would be some sort of combination between the community center and some of these other amenities. For the community center, I'd love to see something in there that would be for the kids and the teenagers of the community, something to keep them busy off the street, educational, I don't know, something with their imagination, but keep the, keep their kids busy and off the street, basically. And then on the other amenities, I'm concerned that things like, since we've already done several rounds of this, that things like a food truck court and splash pad, food hall, dog park, that those items are even still on there, because we have those things already in the city. And I'd hate to see any duplications. I think it would be a waste. The art studios, we have the Mac just right across the street, so I'm surprised to see those things still here on this, like, fourth round of limiting things down. But I do bowling alley, movie theater, you know, we don't have those kinds of things. So I'm just asking to maybe put some emphasis on let's not duplicate things that we already have and work towards things that we don't have and would be more beneficial. Thank you.
Thanks for your ideas and input there, Mary. Thank you very much. All right. Have anyone else that has a comment on this?
No.
Anyone else in the audience would like to speak on this?
Wow, this is one of the most consequential projects ever to come forward in, in Rancho Cordova. This is our chance to spark development on Volson Boulevard, so public comment is really wanted.
I'm Tara Colvin-Bach from Rancho Cordova. I live in Stone Creek. And I'd just like to say that this is just really exciting. And I hope that, like, if, when we're limiting it to the, the three, that we really publicize that people should come and understand what's happening and give their opinion on what has been decided, or what the, the three ones that are viable options are. Because I know people thought, I think maybe I misled them, that there may be more meetings to discuss and have it open to the, the public. And so I just don't want that to go by the wayside, to give more impetus to more, like Mary Nessel and her input, because I think we really need that. There are so many different things that could happen to that project, and it's so exciting. So that's just my input to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. That was very good. Anyone else? Are you sure? Okay. I'm going to close on that one and go on to the council request for future agenda items. Do we have any?
I just, because we asked for this, and this issue is moving so fast at the national and state level, smoking, e-cigarettes, flavored tobacco products, and the lot. At some point, maybe not having a workshop, but a briefing on where the heck we are in this realm, what's being done, what we might still want to talk about. So even, I mean, literally like, like a 20, 10 or 15-minute presentation about kind of what are they actually doing at the FDA, what, what's happening at the state, and what's been left to us to even talk about? Because as somebody who's been really interested in the subject for many, many years, I can't even keep track right now of what's going on. So I know we asked for a workshop, but if we were getting ready to do that, let's not do that, and let's just have a briefing from probably you on where we are.
Well, the medical whodunit is fascinating. Trying to figure out what exactly is, is going on with these.
Well.
And how significant it is.
Well, well, and I don't think, Linda can speak for herself. When I was asking for it, I was much more concerned about the, the products being marketed to children. This entire thing about the bootleg stuff from China and what it's doing to other people, that's, I, I, I don't think that's anything we're going to be trying to tackle. I think that's a, that's a Department of Commerce issue at best. But I just want to understand, because I know there's been specific guidance, there's companies that aren't going to manufacture these things anymore, and just where are we and what, what things can we even start to talk about?
I'd be happy to consider doing that. We had tentatively identified this as the first on the list of a couple ordinances that we were bringing back, a couple topics that we were bringing back. We had packaged this as kind of the, the opening and lead in a conversation about a couple different things that we, we were bringing back for updates on. And the, the approach on the others was going to be to give you the, the status update of the law, when it was adopted, what's been done, how are you using it, sort of how is it, how is the tool being used by staff, and whether there were any recommended updates or not. I, I agree that, given the amount of actual activity on this topic, it may lend itself to just breaking out. We had been targeting the, either the, the first meeting in December as the probable time to do that, that bigger update. We've had a couple conversations with all the department heads where we'd started outlining all of that work. But I agree that, that perhaps we could split this off and bring it to, like, the 1st of November. I'd be happy to talk with my staff about doing that and moving it up at least a few weeks or a month or more.
Yeah, I just, I want to avoid kind of what, what happened last time, which was, we came in to talk about e-cigarettes. So this was six years ago. We came and talked about e-cigarettes, and it's like, well, let's talk about a smoking ordinance in general. And I, I think we kind of went back and we said, no, let's just do that, do the e-cigarettes, and then go back and do the rest. I just feel like we're at a point right now where it's like, I was talking about flavored tobacco products and vaping products, and now it's sounding like the feds may have just dealt with that with an FDA ruling or recommendation. And some companies are just voluntarily doing it. So understanding that, and then maybe talking briefly about what other things do we want to talk about? Because I think literally, literally what Linda and I think mentioned is something that may not.
It may not even be legal anymore.
Yeah, it may not be legal by January, for all we know.
Yeah.
So, and then maybe we can talk about what are the other things, and maybe just kind of say, of these seven things, here are the four that we would want to tackle. But instead of, instead of dedicating like 90 minutes over there to do that, let's figure out what we do and don't want to talk about first.
Mr. City Manager, absent your suggestions, in the contrary, I'm happy to just accelerate this, and then we can certainly keep the other items on track for December, or you can decide, you know, after the conversation whether, what you want us to do with this topic. But I'd be happy to give you a, a solid update. Give us probably two council meetings, I would think.
It, it would be great to engage, it was the county that was getting tobacco money, and I'm trying to remember what the, the program was, but they had a smoke-free environment plus breathe California, and see if they, if we can engage them, if they have specific recommendations for cities to be adopting right now. But again, I would guess that anything that they've adopted in the last six months today has parts of it that are irrelevant based on what's been going on. So, thank you.
Happy to, happy to.
Thank you, Adam.
Mr. Ray, I have a brief comment on our previous item, I guess in the context of future agenda. Cyrus, we may want to have a talk with the, with the community at some point about the sort of scope of the Civic Center Project. Because I've heard, you know, wishes and hopes and desires from community residents that aren't affordable. You know, they, they were thanking me for considering building, you know, a basketball complex and a new 500-person theater and a Starbucks and, yeah, all, all there. That, I mean, that sort of context, and I'm, I'm exaggerating a little, but I think we got a sort of right-size expectations. And also, as we bring this, these projects forward, and if it's, by the way, if it's four instead of three, that's fine with me. As we bring these projects forward, I think we really ought to, as much as we can, put out the economics of this. You know, what the city's component is, what the developer's component is, what's possible in the market, to what extent are we pushing the market or leading the market, you know, how much risk is involved, but some sort of description, so the public has a really good understanding of what's possible and what we're doing within that range of possibility. Because I think in, in just isolation, just throwing out like one good idea is going to meet with resistance, because it doesn't have everybody's favorite thing in it, even if their favorite thing is totally unaffordable.
Yeah.
Or a duplicate.
Or something else on the site makes what we want affordable, right? There's those sorts of exchanges.
Avoiding, I think. Avoiding, I think, what happened with the, and again, I wasn't here for the beginning of it, but I was here for the, the demise of it, avoiding what happened with the Entertainment Center, where everyone thought that project was going to deliver the thing they wanted, and it got so big that it destroyed itself. So that.
Yeah, they tried to accommodate everyone.
Yeah, yeah, and we, we're, we're not going to do that.
No, thank you, Council. I, just in terms of the, the process and the work that we have been doing, we, we started the discussion some time ago, a visioning, we call them visioning sessions, just to understand the range of options that the council was interested in. And then our second, the current phase and what we're doing, we're focusing on finding the right developer partner to go in with the city. And what we think as the ultimate outcome or the ultimate project may not be exactly what has been proposed. I think at this point, the focus is to find the, for lack of a better word, the right dance partner. Once we have, once we have that in place, then it could be a bit of a, that part, education and that outreach to the community would be made to make sure that we have the right project for the, for the community and for that location.
Because odds are, we're not approving something that was submitted as-is, there's going to be a ton of work.
Most likely, it could be maybe a little bit of one project with something else. The focus right now is to find the right partner and, and the range of options that we have. And to get to that point that we clearly identify what the project is, will take a great deal of debate and discussion and input from the community. This will not be made in, in a rush. A lot of work needs to be done.
Very good. It's going to be popular for some, I think, and not popular for everybody, but I don't think we've ever been able to find that anyway, so. But we are going to do our best, and I think we were looking for people like Mary, and everyone else is going to be coming in and giving us more information and ideas. So thank you, and with nothing else.
Bobo, I just wanted, I just wanted to plug for anyone who's never gone to a nine-one-six Inc. book launch, there's one on your calendar, there's one on this list for January twenty-eighth. Try to make one of these. They're, they're kind of life-altering, so.
Touching.
Yeah. Just a plug, January twenty-eighth at Walnut Wood High.
Very good, thank you. Ming is turned.